Any public discussion on any item on this? Okay, minutes. Hey, we just got one page.
I know.
About that.
I like it when it's one page. Kyle doesn't like it when it's just one page.
Actually, I like it because if I can put a ten-page paper out, I'm happy. Usually, we don't get to because we have two legal pages and then I have no other pages.
Boy, you're kind of... Probably will I, so.
We couldn't write on them.
I'll make the motion.
Second. All in favor? Aye, aye. Email one.
Oh, you don't think they're stacked there?
Look at this, look at this. It's gonna be, it's gonna be a good day.
We need us to do some bills. Next week, we have a whole bunch of bills and they're gonna be like, you didn't have to send it to us.
Crap, you're paying another man to catch him.
Our budget should end this week for our budgets, so we've gotta do more days left on us.
Is that for anybody to protest? What's the last day? Are you gonna call him the last day to protest?
Like the last day and like the last and then it went, "Wheee!"
I don't wanna protest.
I don't know. I mean, do they call the office office to protest there? Somebody was asking him, I'm like, "I'm not gonna tell you because I don't do it." I don't really know, though.
They only open after five o'clock.
They have weird hours. It's like five in the evening till seven in the morning.
So, general consensus of the new phone system, is it all good?
I hope it's still.
Think it's better than it was.
And I did get an email from Darren with Ken O'Blair. And he says, "If we ever have problems like that again with our internet, to call him." I said, "Well, I emailed you. I did not call you." And he says he apologized. He was extremely busy at that time. He said, "Please let him know immediately if we have any problems with the internet again." But I sure will. He said they were just having some issues all the way across during that time.
So, the internet's been working okay?
It hasn't forwarded over to my phone and... I said it's slow again as soon as eight o'clock hits. But I think that's just gonna be something that we have to deal with until we decide to go with a... Just a line for ourselves. But it sure wasn't going up and down like it was there for about two weeks and...
That's a big deal.
Email one thing.
All set.
All in favor? Appropriations.
Exercise tomorrow, change tomorrow.
Martin was shooting sign this right there on the three wheel.
It's kinda one sided there, wasn't it?
Oh, sorry.
Yeah.
And today's another day, just like it. Isn't it?
Do what?
Today's another day, just like it.
Probably is.
Not really.
Oh, is that last time? I got one this time, too, isn't it? It's all good.
Move the appropriate. Second. All in favor? Aye, aye. I hope the legal officer is forward.
There's a lot of them.
Cool.
How much do you have left?
Hey, man. Hey. That's... Stop tying on those gray hairs.
I just got that hair scissors. You could be a hairdresser.
I need that.
Wherever the sign place was, you had to find it there. I lost it.
Down here.
Sorry about that, Marvin. I'll lose this one.
I moved the shift and I lost it before.
Second.
All in favor? Aye. Let me have a week's meeting adjourned.
She said she just had a, I mean, a couple of days. So, I don't know. I don't know if she had it. Okay.
I see here health insurance is higher than Marvin and I understand. How could that be?
I'll make the motion.
Second. All in favor? Aye, aye. Alcohol, beverage tax.
I have to drink a lot to keep Cherokee on top.
You're doing a good job. Stay right in there.
Harold Vick always said, "We're about to catch you."
Yeah.
We're gonna make up favor reports on that.
Vick could be kinda pleased on that. He'd not make margin there.
Boy, that's close this time.
Yeah.
Uh, stand on the chair. I do it opposite. Everybody does. I'm sorry.
Three, what?
I do last things. Everybody else does first things.
Well, I don't know. Next year, it could all change with this new census coming.
Your new what?
When they do that census?
Oh, yeah.
See if they decide to count the inmates or not at Helena. That would really not make it close at all.
Did they count them in the last one?
I don't think so. I think it's, I mean, I would assume it's gonna be counted on that because there's no way that Cherokee and Helena would be close without it.
Blanket purchase.
Intervention Mike, uh, Mike.
Oh, I thought we already did. Here, I'll say it. All in favor?
Fairgrounds. The first two, uh, first three signed Javis, next Katanga and Jeet. And then the last two are the sheriffs. Unless that's just don't sign. That was the sign. Yes. The heat in the courthouse is going to town in here today. It's hot in my office. It's hot in your office every day.
We need to cut.
Martin, it's too hot. We are hot.
We need to cut a hole in the floor because they're always cold up there.
No.
We need to cut a hole in the floor because they're always cold up there.
Third off.
No.
I moved the blanket purchase. All in favor?
My mom.
You did.
Before she cuts, she would bring it around and she'd have that heated thing.
She's a little bit earlier. I'll take the first on this one. Yeah, I like that. Hey, look at that.
They're generous just for once so they don't wind, right?
Yeah, this is wonderful. I know.
That's pretty nice. Well, you know, you gotta move in large work. Now, particularly the gate and all here.
Got all the way home and she violently wanted to come. He was just, like, he was just like, "Oh, my God." "What baby is dusting out?" Like, anything to make him wiggle there. Wipe down.
Did you hear my information yet?
Mm-hmm.
From those two?
Yeah.
On when? On, uh, what they missed out on?
No.
Or what?
The, uh, first announcement.
Oh, she's all weird about that. I asked her again. I said, "Jessica..." So, they have a five-generation picture.
You're okay with me having a picture?
Exactly. They have a five-generation picture. I said, "Fine, if you're gonna put it on our councilman, you're gonna put that five-generation picture there." What she's thinking about, yeah.
Everybody got a present this Christmas.
I'll move the shift, the road crossing for me.
Second.
All in favor? Aye. Property, property, one projector, too.
There's two copies here so we can send one back to Stan. Mine is the unwrinkled one, but Stan's is the original, so.
Cool. I hold that around for a couple of days.
You did. I could go.
I think. Did you sneeze on it or what?
I used it the time of.
No, I won't go into that.
Multipurpose paper.
I'll move the shift, the evening.
So?
Okay, good.
All in favor? Aye. Application for eligibility for federal property donation program to receive federal certified.
Now, I get to straighten that one this time.
Do what?
I get the one that's not all.
Yeah, you do. Yeah, now you get to multipurpose that one.
You got fresh face now.
Mr. Martin Will.
Mr. Martin Will. Next thing, we'll have to call you your honor.
Just don't call you Mrs., right?
Yeah. You don't call me late for dinner.
And do not mark Marion on his, um... Dang it. Trying to help him out. Why not take some of his taxes out? But no. Travel changes next month also. For this month, they have a hundred dollars.
This is federal money out there or?
No, this is, if, I'm not on any, like, going to them sales, surplus sales.
Oh, really?
So, they said they would need to update it. I never was on it. I don't think it's changed since.
Probably hasn't changed for a while. I don't remember ever signing one in the seven years I've been here. Never signed one. I've been doing the same thing for two weeks.
You're on that side, aren't you?
Oh, I get your two bucks if I can. I just want to call the one.
Does either one sound good or do I sound?
Your, your name's under that. It says, well, that may be you.
Yeah, I don't want Marvin. If it's typed underneath it, it's Marvin's name. Have Marvin sign it. Just sign the signing.
Go ahead. Keep coming in. I just mentioned.
I like print name. So, need print name or?
Name together.
They've got a type.
So, Mark that is or?
Just that, the side of the note.
I'll move the shift, the application for eligibility. All set. All in favor? Aye.
It's all, you can copy the original thing.
2020 application holiday schedule.
I kept all of them the same. Christmas is on a Friday, so I just did the Thursday and the Friday. Um, we still have New Year's Day, Martin Luther King, President's Good Friday, Memorial, Independence, Labor Day. Memorial Day is also on, um, or Independence Day is on a Saturday, so we took the Friday. Um, Labor Day, Columbus Day, Veterans Day, two days for Thanksgiving and two days for Christmas. And I have, I brought a calendar. If you wanna double check those.
Need motion on that.
Yes. I'm second. All in favor? Aye.
Next is classy officer.
Officer schedule.
I have it every, the first Monday at every month at one o'clock.
And I still am not exactly sold on that. Why can't we have them quarterly? I get it. I mean, we can. There's no...
Oh, yeah.
That was just a recommendation, but I don't know. We can justify coming back in here every Monday afternoon for what we've got to do. No, no, because I know we revised all this after they said we...
Every year.
Because we didn't. Because I got mine out this week. Oh, you and I both did this one. Mine's March 2019 and I've got notes on it. We went through all of that.
There's the stating. Communication makes it better if we need to talk to you guys once a month. Again, that was their recommendation, was to do it once a month.
I know they recommended it, but...
You guys tell me.
I don't know that, I mean, by opinion, when they were talking to me about that Green Book thing.
Yeah, the Green Book and, and the seventeen-page pamphlet we're going through.
Yeah, they just, they just, I don't think we can get it through one hour, one, or, well, what would it be? Four times a year?
Four times.
That we can never get through it. They don't want just checkmarks. They want it.
Yeah.
And, I mean, that's the only thing I'm saying, and I'm not trying to sway anybody's decision. I'm just saying, I think we're gonna keep getting wrote up every time until we do it like they want it.
And I, and I explained to him, and when I met with him, I said, "Look, we, we..." And I, and I explained to them, and when I met with them, I said, "Look, we, we get this ahead of time so we can go through it. And if we don't have anything on that page and we wanna go to page forty on it or whatever it is and revise that page." I was talking with Lenita this morning about the handbook. You know, why do we print a handbook out for every employee in the county every year? It's, it's a waste of paper. If we revise page twenty-seven, they can take that and put it in their book they got when they went to work for the county. And we're saving a whole lot of paper and time and effort.
Yeah.
By revise. We might not revise anything. We might revise three pages.
And, and I'm not being against that at all because I agree totally with you, but then again, how many of them keep their handbook?
Oh, they throw them in the trash a lot of times. They'll get that.
You know, so there's, though, then they don't have that for them.
But they still got accessibility to one at each one of our offices.
Okay.
That if they need one.
You can, you can make them one or something like that if, if they weren't.
True. You, you got one. You could print one of them up right there.
I told Jay, we gotta revise that page that they signed.
Yeah, we, we'd have to revise a little bit of our handbook when we go through it.
That's one piece of paper.
One piece of paper.
Yeah, because that is a lot of paper when you print it for everybody.
It's a lot of paper, a lot of time and effort.
Right.
Spent that I think is.
Probably biggest expenses ink.
Yeah, you're right.
Yeah.
Then you have four guys that just throw them in the trash right there in front of us.
Yeah.
Thank you.
What do you guys think?
Well, I don't, I don't wanna do it every Monday, but I know we're gonna get it wrote up again.
It's once a month.
Yeah. Once a month. It'd be twelve times versus four times, but they're just gonna write us up. That's the only thing we was wrote up on.
That, and that's probably true, which that part doesn't bother me any because I think we've covered, and we covered things. Maybe I'm wrong, but I know Rick bought a few things up in the Green Book that he had and I recall that, but. We.
I don't know. We made this try.
All right. You making that a motion?
What do you say, Stan?
Yeah, I say that's probably a good idea.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye. I made the motion.
I'm an idiot.
The old man here.
The old man.
Yeah, high insurance rates. Well, yeah, that's right.
Still live too fast.
Sick leave donation for Keaton.
That would have to.
What about the board?
Your guys' meetings.
Oh, oh, yeah. Like an old baby.
Now, actually, you can cut them to once a month or twice a month, but your stack's gonna be huge. And everybody would have to work together, but I know Woods County, they've cut theirs. Woods County has, Ellis County has. I think Woodford County and Grant County still meet every Monday, but.
Yeah, I, I know.
But some of those, you don't even?
A lot of them have, have, yeah.
Yeah.
But they may not have near as much. I don't know.
I know.
It'd be a mess. It'd be a bunch of paper.
It would be.
Yeah.
Someone make another two weeks.
They only pay twice a month, then. So, that, I mean, that would be you guys having to get everything in for those two weeks, you know.
Yeah.
Yeah, they have.
I'll make a motion.
Second. All in favor? Now, sick leave donation. And Marvin, we appreciate that. I mean, I know Mike was gonna lose it or.
Yeah.
And that's what Lenita told me and, and.
He wanted to send it to somebody that needs it.
Well, he needs to, he's having, basically, his kidneys aren't functioning now and, and they're. He's got good days and bad yet, but.
Yeah, it'll be great. We appreciate it.
Yes, it will. We just signed the bottom of this.
Yeah, just make it, just make a spot at the very bottom. I just went through the meeting and I'll give you a copy of that and then two copy of that.
I'm moving to check the sick leave. All in favor?
OMA meeting, ours class on Wednesday at one o'clock.
And that's at the downtown.
Sheriff Building.
Sheriff Building, yeah.
And that's the.
That's Dale's presentation on the medical.
Medical marijuana issue.
Oh, is it Monday?
Wednesday.
One o'clock.
So, don't use any marijuana driving down there.
Any other unpretend business. I'll move the.
I'll suck it there. Okay.